Good evening. We're here at the regular Pickwass City Commission meeting Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Let us start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Grissom.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Commissioner Foote.
Here.
Trustee Hartley.
Here.
Trustee Lang.
Here.
Trustee Mc Mackin.
Can you make a resolution?
A motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. Edward is on a vacation.
Can I get a second?
Unavailable.
Second.
I'll second it. Okay, thank you.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So this is a joint meeting with the Washington Township Trustees and the Pickwass City Commission. And she's called the roll.
Consent agenda tonight, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from the March 5th, 2019 joint meeting of the Washington Township Trustees and the Pickwass City Commission. Item number two is a resolution appointing Chris Lee to the Board of Trustees of the Forest Hill Union Cemetery for a remaining term expiring December 31st, 2022. And the third is a resolution appointing Thomas J. Lang to the Board of Trustees for the Forest Hill Cemetery for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022.
All right.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass?
Motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you. All right. So for the regular city commission meeting, we have a presentation by the Pittsburgh Barger Movie Premier Committee members. The committee members will come forward. You guys did a wonderful job. We really appreciate everything that you did.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Last Full Measure Movie Premier Committee, we would like to thank the residents of Pickwass. First, thank you for the overwhelming, overwhelming attendance at the reception held at the Food Court in the Miami Valley Center Mall. Second, for attending and supporting the movie, which then opened in 617 theaters nationwide on January 24th, and it made $1.1 million over that first weekend. That equates to a per-location of about $1,600. But because of the wonderful turnout at the Cinemark Miami Valley, our local cinema did approximately eight times that amount over the same weekend. Making the Pickwass Cinemark the busiest in the Cinemark Corporation, and in all probability, also the busiest theater in the entire country for the movie over the weekend. But most of all, thank you for making our guests, who were either involved in the production of the movie or actual mud soldiers, having been involved and fought in the battle on the fateful day of April 11th, 1966, and who traveled from as far away as LA and San Antonio, feel the spirit of our wonderful city. They were amazed at the honor paid to them and how welcome our citizens made them feel. In closing, we would like to read an email received from the premier, to the premier committee from producer Sidney Sherman and director and writer Todd Robinson. We want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the incredible events you planned for the premiere of The Last Full Measure in Pickwass. All of our veterans and filmmaker guests repeatedly told us they could not believe how beautifully you were treating them and how special they felt. You exceeded our wildest expectations, and it is very clear that the spirit of William Pittsburgher is in every lovely citizen of Pickwass. It truly was a magical two days for all of us. Thank you again for the incredible memories that we will always cherish. America would be a better place if there were more Pickwass. With deep gratitude, Sidney and Todd.
You know what? Thank you very much for that. And on my behalf and behalf of us up here, and Casey, you did a great job, and everybody that was on the committee, thank you. I mean, it, it was fantastic from meeting the actors and the writer and the producers that, that were here, to the family members that showed up and to the people that he saved. I thought that was amazing, talking to them. It was just, it was heartfelt and, you know, one of the first things that happened since I've been mayor, and it, it was a great, a great thing to happen, so.
And thank you for giving the proclamation.
Oh, that was the easy part. You guys had the hard part. The organization was the hard part. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from the Pickwass Parks Board. Is it the whole board?
End of night.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening. I'd like the slides to come up, I guess. Pretty much this presentation is about the Pickwass pool, where it's going to go or where can it go in the future. In the next slide, you will see the, what is it? Our daily emissions for the pool had probably saved average for the last, I would say, last 10 years. I can't remember when they were last changed. But if you look at the, I researched on the last cities like, let's see, like Sydney, Troy, Tip City, ours is cheaper than anybody else right now as for daily emissions. As for fees-wise, like for season passes, they're about the same, if anything, if not, average. The next slide will show the 2020 budget for the pool, which is $272,000. $86,000 goes to labor and benefits. Operation and maintenance is about $185,000. And just to get the pool open this year is probably about $40,000 to $50,000 because the bottom of the pool will need, be repainted again. Yeah. Pool improvements that need to be done over time are gonna probably be the whole pool replaced. Now, average, you're gonna look at about $4 million. He has about $3 million, but three to four probably. But the whole pool is, I mean, it's past its prime, it's 30-plus years old. There's no fixing it. So with that, we know, we've been talking a lot in the Park Board about where do we go forward with the pool. For me, like I said, pools, it's past its prime. It's something to do different. So I know some of us have said, maybe we look into our options. Do we use splash pad? Do we do splash pad in pool? Or what do we do there? In this slide here, you'll see that the attendance, well, the daily average attendance, back in 2008, you see we had almost 20,000 attendants. Compared to last year, we had 8,000. Now, we can put a asterisk on that because we had a lot of rain in January, and plus the pool was closed on Friday because of, due to shortage of lifeguards. But the shortage of lifeguard is not a joke. It's everywhere.
Everywhere, yeah.
I mean, you Google lifeguard shortages and you'll find it every city, up and down the East Coast, Columbus. Look at Sydney, they struggled last year. They closed the pool two weeks early because of lifeguard shortages. So here's some slides of the conditions of the round the pool. Like this is around the, I think, the bathroom area, and you see the concrete is just cracking, falling apart. That concrete's pretty much done. You see more damage there. Door there in the corner is rusted out, so, I mean, and needs replaced. You see the wall there, the stainless steel wall, it's starting to pull away from the pool deck itself, and then you see the pool paint itself, it's almost gone. So it's gotta be repainted. See the big cracks in the pool? That's obviously not a good sign. That needs, I mean, obviously, the pool needs to be replaced, period. And then that needs repainted and repaired as well. So in other words, our recommendation is, at some point in time, we're gonna have to sit down, commission and Park Board, and come up with a solution to what we do forward with the pool. Now, do we go, go to do pool? Do we go splash pad in the pool? What do we do? Well, I, like, I had an idea, maybe we oughta, it's not about what we want, should be what the kids want. So why can't we do something like, do a thing with the schools and do a survey of what the kids want? Maybe we can do a video, put together, the kids can see what a splash pad does, what a splash pad of pool can do, and go from there. Maybe we could put the kids on. It's not about what we want. Because the kids are the future of the city. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Do we, you don't have questions?
No, it's a presentation.
It's a presentation. So during the open session, people can ask questions?
Yes.
All right. So if anybody would like to make comments about the pool, please do that during the open session, when, when we invite people up. And so next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Yeah, two items on the consent agenda. One is the approval of the minutes from the January 21st, 2020 regular Pickwass City Commission meeting, and the second is a resolution of appreciation for the public service of Frederick W. Langston as a city employee for over 33 years. Fred was unable to attend tonight, but he received his resolution at a previous ceremony that we had.
All right. Okay.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next is old business. Ordinance number 120, 1-20, third reading.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of Pickwass, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement, and establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund.
Mr. Schmiesing will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Commission will recall, this item pertains to the extension of Scarborough Drive, which is in support of the IDC Spring Expansion Project that's currently underway and progressing very nicely. We have engaged a consulting firm to begin the preliminary design work for the roadway extension, looking forward to being able to execute this project. And we're on track to be able to have that out for bid here as soon as the weather breaks and be able to put the roadway in a very timely manner. Happy to answer any questions. I know we've had a couple of discussions on this already.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Any questions from the citizens?
I have just a couple of questions about this. I suppose, first of all, I just wanted to quickly, why is it that when people make presentations like Chris, that they don't, I mean, you guys are up here for a reason that establishes a line of authority. I'm not equal with you, and that's, why shouldn't, why shouldn't people come in?
You are equal with us, Mr. Jacque.
Okay, well, I just would think, when city people come up and propose things, that they ought to be up here, not down there. I think it's, that's just a suggestion.
I'll take that, I'll take that as a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to talk about this just for a second.
Sure.
So the execution of a tax increment financing agreement and establishing a municipal public tax, now, is that relatively new? Is that something we've not had before?
I don't think that the city's done one of these, I don't know of any time in the past. It's not a new thing. It's being used at a lot of different locations.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm stepping up to ask about this is that it is my opinion, and it might just be from hearsay, that, that we don't give enough, there's not enough tools in the toolbox for somebody like an economic development director to go out and solicit business and compete with other, Sydney and Troy, for example. And I just, my question is, is there, is that true? Do we have enough tools in the toolbox to, to equally compete? And if not, what can we do about that? And then just kind of just finish that, and then I'll sit down. But Natalie, my daughter was involved in a project, and I don't want to get into that project because it's none of my business, but you're familiar with it, and it, and...
I was gonna talk about it, but go ahead.
But, so, it's not my place to get involved in that. But I do want to make a comment about that in relationship to this, is that you, of all these commissioners, you're probably the only one who has a real sense of the competition between Pickwass, Sydney, and Troy. And I'm assuming you have 30 or 40 years of that, and what it's like every, you could ask Randy, we got beat 54 to 6 when Randy was, when we were in 10th grade. In this little project, Troy and Sydney was all over trying to interfere to get, to get that project out of Pickwass hands and into theirs. So the only thing I'm saying is, is that the competition between Pickwass, Sydney, and Troy, that doesn't stop when you get out of high school. That continues into business, and these people are cutthroat. And, and, I mean, I like people from Troy, I've been with the Troy Country Club for a long time, but they'll cut your throat over a nickel. And I just, so now, you guys have witnessed that, and you should, of all people, should have an appreciation of that, so.
Is that why we need all the tools we can to, for economic development?
Yeah, I, you know, I criticized Chris a lot, and I think if you gave him, if you filled his toolbox up, so to speak, you probably would get a lot more results from him, so.
I appreciate. Thanks, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, just to follow up on that question, is there are, I think Mr. Schmiesing talked at the last meeting, a number of the tools that we're utilizing, some of them that have not been utilized before, such as tax increment financing and PACE, as a couple more, but we have resources through the state that we're able to utilize, and we have tax incentives and things along those lines. So I think Mr. Schmiesing is filling his own toolbox up with some new stuff that we'll be able to utilize going forward, so.
Well, and I think, again, and we talked about this at the last meeting, the mock site visit with Jobs Ohio really showed where we are as we, as we move forward with our economic development and the tools we already have in our toolbox, because their comment was, we're in a good place as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I think it's, we have some terrific assets in our community in terms of the utility infrastructure and some of the opportunities that we have. But to Gary's point, there are some things that we can do in terms of leveraging some of the state legislation that is available to us to be able to take advantage of tax increment financing. You've heard me mention PACE financing before. There's a couple of projects that are beginning to emerge now that more than likely will want to take advantage of that. So we'll be advancing the legislation to this body that is necessary for us to be able to put it in place so that they can utilize those, those resources. So just being out there and connecting with our resource partners and knowing what's available to us, so that when the opportunities present themselves, we're in a good position to be able to reach out to, say, Jobs and Commerce and secure the grant dollars that they have available to support these kind of projects. So that's really the name of the game, and being prepared for when the opportunities present themselves.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public on this topic? If not, will the clerk call the roll?
Okay, Commissioner Hines.
What? I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1-20.
I'll second it. Okay. Now, would you like a roll?
Call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Foote.
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Thank you.
On the agenda, under new business, ordinance number 5-20, first reading.
We would ask you to waive the readings on this one. This deals with non-union employees who would be getting the same type of increase. If we wait, they're gonna have to wait another month and a half instead of getting those now, so.
A motion to waive the three reading rule.
A motion to re, to waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. The motion has been to waive the three reading rule.
Now, I'll ask Ms. Bogan to share that information.
Yeah. Thanks, Gary. Good evening. As Gary said, Schedule A represents our full-time, non-bargaining unit, city employees. We've adjusted the schedule by 2.5% to reflect the cost of living adjustment, and as Gary indicated, this is the same COLA that was offered to our bargaining unit employees that was approved here on the 21st of January.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Citizens? Anybody in the public have any questions?
No. Motion for the approval of ordinance number 5-20.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll on that?
Absolutely. Commissioner Grissom.
Aye.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Foote.
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number R-21-20.
A resolution approving the purchase of liability insurance for Pickwass combustion turbines.
Ms. Holtz Apple.
Thank you. Moverma, our insurance carrier, is unable to cover certain specialty areas under our general liability policy. Chubb has provided this excess coverage for the electric utilities' combustion turbines in the past, and the coverage before you is for the calendar year 2020. As several of you may recall, under this coverage a few years ago, the city was reimbursed over $1 million towards repairs to damages within those turbines. So it is definitely beneficial to both the city and the utility.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? Has this saved us money in the past?
Yes.
Can you give me an example?
Well, the turbines were significantly damaged a few years ago under this policy, and over $1 million of that repair cost was reimbursed back to the city under this type of plan.
I, I also know that Ed Krieger of the Power Department talks about how much the turbines actually save us as part of our power supply, so.
Exactly.
And I think he's used up to $1 million.
Or more.
Or more, yeah.
All right. How old are those? They're, so, from the 70s?
The turbines are older.
Yeah, so having a coverage price.
But we've had, had them rebuild and everything. It's necessary that we rebuild them that, so we would have the coverage and so forth.
Understood.
Joe Drapp.
Yes, sir.
1366 Park Avenue, and I sit on the Energy Board. Those are very old turbines, I believe, and they were bought, used. But combined, they're capable of producing about, let's say, we came off the grid for one reason or another, the grid failed. We could supply just from those two units, would be expensive power, but it's possible we could meet about half of our power needs through running those things. And as Cindy said, it's, we had a couple blades come off some, some of the turbine fans, and as a consequence, it did unbelievable damage. They run at high RPM, and so those are really essential items going forward, and it also helps in our credit rating, which our electric department has an excellent credit, credit rating with Amp Ohio, which is where all our alternative power comes from outside of those units. So would strongly suggest that we spend the money, and the insurance is not cheap, I'm sure. Is that right?
It's about $93,500 for this next year, yes.
But when we had our last damage, it was well in excess of $1 million, so that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Pretty cheap. Thank you.
In trade. Go ahead, sir. Public.
I'm Bill Jacque, 607 North Sunset Drive. I think if you guys would go back over the years and add up how much money we've spent on those freaking turbines, it's probably in the millions. I mean, I was written generators to people back in the 70s when they were down, and I have a vivid picture of Mayor Sam Jackson up on the top of one at 4:00 in the morning trying to get it going. My question is this, why do we need them?
They're backups, it sounds like, but...
Why do we even need to be on that, if, if, can we get on some, there's a guy, Terry Wright, I don't, you know, not, I'm not, but he comments a lot on social media about our power grid and things of that sort, and he has been recently talking about us being on, marketing, marketing ourselves as a smart city. And he says that if we were marked to market ourselves as a smart city, then some of the higher-tech stuff that might come into town, and that, that stuff is all really interrelated with our, with our electrical system and our, and being on a larger grid. So my question is, is if, is it possible just to get rid of those turbines? I mean, has anybody ever done a study that would say, hey, gee, if there's so much power out there that we can buy, why do we need to be generating our own power? That's my question.
Well, two things with that. One is that with, by having the turbines, we're able to produce emergency energy when it, when we need it. Second is that we get credit of what, energy that we purchase is over $1 million a year. So that's less, that's over $1 million of energy we don't have to, to purchase, which saves the city a tremendous amount of money. So for two really good reasons, I think, they need, we need to keep them going as long as possible.
Yeah, it's my understanding, and I'm gonna interject a little bit, that they're not operated all the time. They tend to come on in peak periods of time.
Just when we're required to, yeah.
And that's when the, they're expensive to operate, and they sell the power back to Amp Ohio, is my understanding, and that credits us, and we actually buy power from Amp Ohio at a cheaper rate. Is that right, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, sit closer.
Yeah, sit closer. Here, there you go.
That's part of, the bill we receive for power we purchase every month is extremely complex. Is that correct? And so we do get credit. It reduces our power consumption bill for the month. And so we may only a handful of times be required by Amp to fire those units up, because they burn fuel oil, and they burn a lot of fuel oil. So they're not, they're not efficient.
At all.
And they're, at all, and they're old. We wouldn't want to switch to natural gas because although that's cheaper than fuel oil, we would have to go through a recertification unit on both units. And I can just about guarantee you that those 1964 units, although we've put money in, a lot of money in them and kept them running, would not be up to day, to today's environmental rules. So we would likely be without those units. So we consider that's, Troy, if they lost their DPNL feed, would have no sources of power.
We do.
If we lost our DPNL feed, we could at least run those turbines. And we have the solar field out there, too, which, if the grid went down, we could also produce some additional power, not a lot, less than four watts, but every watt counts if you're trying to keep your house warm or, or whatever. So as to Bill's point, I think it would take, would be an extensive, expensive study for us to undertake, and I don't think we have enough personnel to do it. I think we have the smarts in Cindy, but it's a, that would be, take some complex calculations to determine if just phasing those units out might be in our best interest. And that time will come. They don't have an indefinite life, so if we were faced with $1 million of repairs that insurance didn't cover, we, we probably would not put that in, into those units at this time, or maybe even going forward. So we have an outstanding electrical department here, and it's known nationally as how to run a small city public utility. I am definitely a salesman for that, and the city as a whole, so. I am definitely a salesman for that, and the city as a whole, so...
And we could sell the city as a smart city, too. Bill, do you have any other questions? No, no.
Okay. I'm not trying to beat horses, you know what, but I'm quite the novice, however, in twenty years, I've learned a little bit, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. But there's something to be said about what Bill said about selling us, ourselves, about being a smart city. I mean, letting people know that we've got fiber and that we've got enough power and we've got these excesses, we get that out there and let people know. Chris said it, Bill said it, guys are all saying the same thing, just need to say it to everybody.
Mayor Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that one of, I'm trying to look through all my notes from, from Ed with, around utilities, but I know one of the things that, that we talk about is how our diverse portfolio, which I think is what you're speaking to as well, is so helpful for us that we can pull the power from so many different places. And we are unique in, in this area to have such a diverse portfolio to be able to do that. And the fact that, you know, very rarely does our power go out, and we don't run into the issues that some of our neighbors do that have DPNL, when it goes out, that it takes a while for them to have it turned back on. So I think that is something that we need to remember, one of the main advantages of having our own system.
Totally agree with you, one hundred percent, so. All right. Yeah, come on up, sure.
Joe, we might be the only one that can answer this question, maybe one of you guys can, I don't know.
Of Ed is here, I'm sure.
Um, how often are, what's, what's the inspection process of inspecting these turbines to see how much the life has left in them?
Gary, do you know?
Well, they use consultants to, you know, look at that. I don't know, off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but they do determine whether it's worthwhile of rebuilding them or whatever we need to do, so...
Would they, would they, I guess, my, my main question is, is would they, would they recommend just not repairing them ever again if it came to that, or is they're just kind of, okay, so they...
Yeah, if they got to a point that it's not worthwhile, they would, but depending on what the, you know, as was mentioned, the damages, if it's covered by insurance and so forth, you know, probably worth fixing it. If, if it's something that's not, I'm sure that those companies that help us keep those in order would either make a recommendation, you know, you don't need to fix it or...
Right.
Anymore, so...
It's just troubling to hear that they're over fifty-some odd years old. Could we, could we still use them and not purchase the insurance when it came down to it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so if it comes to a point, if it comes to a point then where, you know, they say, don't even bother fixing it, we can continue to use it until it just completely dies?
But, but keep in mind, keep in mind, you stop using those turbines, then your energy costs go up by over a million dollars.
Right, sure.
And, you know, and credit.
Well, my, my whole concern is, is are we gonna insure a piece of equipment? Hey, Joe, are we gonna ins, uh, and keep insuring a piece of equipment that is just gonna continue to break down, and are we insuring it just for repair purposes, or, you understand what I'm saying? It's not necessarily a...
I hear you.
Well, when we rebuilt the turbine with a million bucks in insurance money, when we got that turbine back, it was ra, rated higher than when we sent it down there. So we, they actually knew methodology and everything, they were able to rebuild it, so it was better than when it came to us originally. Plus, on both units, well, on the unit that sits out by the interstate, by Miami Industries, we just recently, in the last couple of years, put a brand-new starting engine on this, because it takes a big diesel engine to get the turbine to just turn, turn, then it gets it going fast enough that the turbine will take over by itself. The engine disengages and slows down and dies off. But those engines, both those engines, at both of them, one down here, we just recently had rebuilt, and so for, as far as we can tell now, they're good to go for an indeterminate amount of time. But there's definitely something to be said about, as time goes on, reconsidering spending that amount of money on insurance. If we develop alternative sources, which we have considered doing, which is putting gas-fired units inside our old power plant, which is one of the reasons we have not taken that plant down, we may actually put brand-new natural gas units to replace those, so that's where we sit. We, we're just in good shape. We, and they run those units at least once a month, they fire them up, and they check everything.
Regular maintenance is on.
Oh, yeah, regular, always, always, so that never goes undone, because the guys in the system recognize the value that those units have to us, so...
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's actually...
No, it's a good explanation.
Sorry about that one, but...
No.
Thank you very much. And for further, we could always have Ed come and give us additional information. Anything else on this topic?
I'm Marcia Garrett, I reside at three eighteen Westview Drive here in Pickwa. I would like to address the City Commissioners, Mayor Lee and Mr. Huff regarding the pool situation.
Well, we're not, we're not to the open...
We're not doing that?
No, we're still on the...
I just wanted to give you my opinion.
We're still, I want your opinion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Trust me. But we're still on this resolution for the...
See, I'm anxious.
And we haven't, if you come right back here after one more resolution, then, then we're gonna have a public comment, okay? All right. If there's nothing else on the resolution, R twenty-one dash twenty...
I move that we adopt resolution number R twenty-one dash twenty.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Next on the agenda is resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty.
A resolution approving the purchase of excess liability insurance.
Ms. Holtz Apple.
Thank you. Once again, Moverma is unable to cover certain special areas and other utilities. Associated Electric and Gas Insurance Service, AEGIS, has provided the excess coverage for the city's dams and areas of water, wastewater, and the electric utilities for several years. This coverage, once again, would cover for calendar year 2020 at a cost of approximately eighty-one thousand fifty-three dollars.
Commissioners, any comments?
I'd have one question. I knew there was talks with the removal of dams, would that, has there been any update on that to know if this insurance would apply towards those?
I'm sorry, would apply towards...
It says, uh, coverage for dams. I know we have the one out by Electrical.
Well, we actually, a whole levee, we have three, and plus the hydraulic system, are all covered under Natural, the Department of Natural Resources. So we're studying those dams as required by the Department of Natural Resources, we haven't finished up that full report yet. In the meantime, we have to maintain insurance in case you, like, you have insurance for those accidents. If a levee would breach, something would happen, and all kind of damages and so forth as a result of that. So that's important, that we keep the insurance as we look at the, what needs to be done with the dams and so forth in the future.
Perfect.
And, and just to, to kind of, while we're talking about that, I know there's been questions, and some of you will ask me questions about the clearing of some of the trees and brush off the, off all the levees, and that was a...
Thank you.
...requirement of the Department of Natural Resources. We had been in discussion with them for quite some time, we weren't in favor of it, but it boils down to, they were, they issued the fact that we had to remove a lot of that so they could do seepage inspections, so we really didn't get much choice on it. You might say, well, why don't we do it? Why didn't we, you know, just deny doing it? Well, they come in and take it over, and they do whatever's necessary at that point and more, so you really have to comply with the regulations.
And they're gonna shore that up and make it look nice, though, right?
Well, yes, it'll look, look very nice when it's all finished. It's been, we had hoped, hoped to get in there immediately, but it's been so warm that the ground is not frozen, and so we really have to wait till either it freezes or it warms up and dries up or something.
I have had a lot of comments and emails about that.
Yes, it will be cleaned up, and it'll look kind of like with the area behind French Park, where you see that, where the trees are.
Sculpted, it looks nice.
Would this insurance cover things like spillage into our waterways, or how, what, what items?
Well, depending on, let's say we have breaches of the levees, if they break and cause downstream damage, then that's what this insurance covers us for.
Okay.
Hopefully, you know, we don't anticipate that happening, but you never, never know.
Any comments from the citizens? Take a motion.
Put a motion to adopt resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now's the time for public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office.
Marcia.
Marcia. Marcia, Marcia, Marcia. Sorry, sorry, I couldn't help.
Hi, I'm Marcia Garrett, and I live at three eighteen Westview Drive here in Pickwa. I'd like to address the commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Lee and Mr. Huff regarding the pool situation. We saw the presentation this evening by the park board, and in the pictures, we saw all the problems and repairs, costly repairs, that's going to need to be done in order to get the pool and the pool area up to par. On that note, I would like the commissioners of the city to consider at least maybe fixing the necessary repairs needed to at least be able to open up the pool again this summer, this season.
Isn't that budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
For this year, but long-term?
Yeah, I understand that. Last, at the end of the season last year, there were rumors floating around in the pool community that the city had already decided that they were going to, I know it's just rumor, close the pool permanently and replace it with possibly a splash pad sort of deal. When we got word of these rumors, a few of us that attend the pool regularly and have for many years decided to draw up a petition and to keep the pool, and we did...
How many signatures did you get?
I'm sorry?
How many signatures did you get?
We got over a hundred signatures.
That's awesome.
In less than a week's time, because we were at the end of the season there. We did meet with Mr. Huff and Mr. Burkhardt to discuss these rumors, and at that time, we did present Mr. Huff with our petition, which he still has in his possession.
He still has, yeah.
So, and I feel that many of the citizens that did sign the petition that want a pool here in Pickwa would be willing to help the city in any way we could to make this happen.
All right, and so some of the options are, obviously, we raise the funds privately, right? And people could spearhead a committee to, to do that. Another option is that we put a levee out, out there, you know? I mean, and that's something that, you know, we'll have to sit down and talk about. And one of the things I was, I was gonna propose tonight is that we have some sort of work study, work session, because one of my goals is to get this moving now, so that when next year at this time, we'll have a plan of action, or we'll at least know what we can, where we're going with it, so...
Sounds great. Thank you so much for your time.
No, I appreciate you coming forward and saying something. Sir?
My name is James Verhots.
Yes, sir.
Twelve twenty-two Nickland Avenue, longtime resident of Pickwa.
Yes, ma'am.
I also, like Marcia, support our pool. Just yesterday, on a warm day, one of my granddaughters, five years old, said, "Grandpa, can we go to the pool today?" And I'd bring her today, but she's watching SpongeBob right now, so conflicts with that. But that's how important it is. I mean, I go back to the days of the hollow.
Oh, yeah.
That created a lot of community, just, you remember?
I do.
Chris.
I do.
Oh, my gosh.
I remember a lot of...
Wonderful, and I do see that, we are avid swimmers. Four of our grandkids have learned to swim up there. Wonderful staff, it's just a sense of community, and I think our kids need that, they really do. And amenities in our town, that would be such a great thing. I mean, Troy has a good pool, Tip City, it brings people together. I know they're not always profitable, but that sense of community is important.
It is.
And when a little five-year-old says, "I want to go up to the pool."
Sure.
And so, I'll be brief, but I think it's very important that we do consider keeping our pool going. There are a lot of people that are interested that would be, you know, willing to help. I don't think I'd make a good lifeguard, but there's a lot of us.
You would enjoy it, though, right?
Well, yes, yes, and that's what's important. And I know Marcia, I've met her up there many a times, and we've all talked and said, "Hey, we can do this." I know Pickla can do it. We're a great community. My wife's from Troy, she can attest to that, she loves Pickla, too, and we just ask that you guys reconsider, you know, all this. We know we're gonna keep it open this year, but boy, wouldn't it be great? Splash pad, pool, the whole thing up there, the ballparks, everything. And, because our kids are our future, and we want them to stay in Pickwa, not grow up, move away, and visit.
Agree.
We'd like them to stay. So thank you for your time.
No, no problem.
I do appreciate it.
Thank you for coming forward, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor Lee, I think it seems like there's some, some confusion maybe out in the public that we've already made a decision.
Yeah, there's no decision.
And I want people to know, we have not made a decision.
Nope.
There has been, you know, this was just a presentation to us tonight, but there's not a decision that's...
There's no decision, that's why I said, I would like to have a, a work study, invite the public with all of us, so we can sit down and get some ideas. We want to hear from the public, but, and when I say public, come out, and be part of it. I know you guys came out, and I think that's great, and anybody else with any comment on this is welcome to say something, but we, we want to figure this out and do what's good for our community, and don't want to see another hollow situation, I agree, so... Yes, sir? Yes? You?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
Leah, four oh six West High Street. Since we're on the subject of the pool, I know we spoke a little bit after the last meeting about this. Me personally, all for it, I think we should keep it. I've swam since I was five, like, I've competed at that particular pool, like, I know how important it is to anybody who either just wants to get exercise, have fun, you know, whatever your reason for going. My question is, I know, and forgive me, because I missed the presentation, so if this has already been covered, I apologize. I know part of the concern of what I've been hearing from the people who run it is that they can't keep people there to work, and I know part of that is...
That's a nationwide thing, like you said.
Yeah, getting people certified and the amount of money it costs to do that, and everything like that. Are they in a position, are we able to help them be in a position to reimburse?
For training?
For, yeah, for training and certification, or is there other options that we could go through where maybe certification is free in some places, and we can send them there, and that might help alleviate some of the, you know...
Pair up with the YMCA?
Yeah, like pair up with the YMCA, or, I don't know, people who are, who are certified trainers willing to volunteer their time, donate their time in turn for classes. I mean, like, have we looked into any of those options?
Off the top of my head, I'm not, I know they go through a number of processes to try to get, and we can, I'd have to get you an answer on that. And I know that we've tried to work with the Y.
Okay.
I think they've been helpful before, calling different places. I know Mr. Burkhardt has called different pool organizations, or, I should, lifeguard organizations, trying to find extra guards and so forth, so...
Okay.
It continues to be a challenge for us, but we're gonna try to do our best to, to come up with the guards again this year.
Okay. And if they can't, I'm trying to think how to word this, okay. If, if they can't keep somebody permanently, would they, is allowing people to volunteer their time who maybe are certified, that don't have to worry about that cost for certification as much?
You have to be certified.
No, I mean, yeah, I mean, like, people who are certified, but if they, instead of being consistently on the payroll, like, can they say, like, if I wanted to do it, if I got certified, said, "Hey, I'll volunteer my time on the weekends," will that help out? Like, don't necessarily have to pay me as much as you normally, what other people, like, is that an option?
Well, I certainly think that if they were fully qualified and willing to work, that we'd probably utilize them if they didn't want to get paid.
Okay, I just, I'm just saying, I didn't know if, I didn't know if volunteering your time to be a lifeguard without getting paid would be an option, or if people were willing to go that far.
Get free sun, too, right?
Yeah, free sun and everything, so, all right.
Hey, this was the presentation, I want you to have this.
Oh, okay.
Gary, can I add something to her question or response?
Yes.
So we are diligently working with the YMCA, we've even reached out to Edison to see if they can help us with the... We've even reached out to Edison to see if they can help us with the certification program. Something else that we utilized last year, we have a classification series for the lifeguard. Obviously, a lot of them are kids, maybe college students, but they start at minimum wage as lifeguard A. If they're returning lifeguards, they come back the next year as B, a bit higher, and then step C. One of the things that we did last year to entice them to come was if they were already certified, or if they got certified at the beginning of the season, we immediately advanced them to step C, to try to give them more money and incentivize them to stay. But as you've all pointed out, we're also competing with Sydney, Troy, TIP. We're all struggling for lifeguards. And Marcia, to your point, we also need pool managers this year. So, if you all know folks in the community who are responsible, trained adults, we also need supervision for the pool. So, those personnel factors are, you know, big variables in this. So, the community support behind those recruitment efforts is needed, too, for those of you that are invested in it. Pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhardt.
I, I will add that my son is of the age of some of the lifeguards. Some of his friends are lifeguards at the pool and were last summer and are also lifeguards at the other two pools as well, with Tecumseh Woods and the Country Club or the Y. I mean, it's amazing how they pass them back and forth. And I know that for many of them, one of the struggles is for high school students, if, if the weather is below seventy degrees, they don't work. And so, it's a struggle if they're not sitting on that lifeguard stand and making the money that they don't, that they don't get paid. And so, I know for some of the, my son's friends, that's been a struggle for them. So, I'm just sharing that, because it is, it's, it's our, this was my summertime job in high school and college. I loved it. And I agree, we don't need to close our pool, but we've got to figure out some way to keep it going.
Yep.
And unfortunately, the financial piece is the hard piece of it, so.
Seventy degrees? Okay, sorry, when I used to have some practice, as long as it was sixty-three, we still practiced, so.
It's, I think it's seventy is what.
Okay. Then it answers my question. No.
All righty, thank you very much.
On the swimming pool.
Bill Jacqua, right?
Bill Jacqua, 607 North Central.
For those of us who run social site medias, we get a lot of input on, you know, if you
want something hot, say something about the pool. And so, I can pretty much assure you, when you look at the, the drop in percentage of people going to our pools.
See it.
Those people are still swimming, they're just not coming here.
Yeah.
So, what I would suggest that you do is have a town hall and start getting people up here.
Yeah.
And, you know, you know, instead of canceling the meeting, not showing up, substitute a town hall and get people up here to get input on why, you know, why, why, you know, why are you going somewhere else, or whatever, whatever the problems are.
I think I just said that I wanted to have that, but that's okay.
And for those of you who aren't my age, I don't know how many of you people realize how hard it was to get a swimming pool, but it was very difficult prior to, I think, 1987. And we went for a long time without a public pool. And it was, you know, it was a big deal when we did get a pool. But that's not really what I came up here for.
That's all right, you go ahead, what do you, what'd you come up with?
So, I've got probably a couple more minutes.
You do, you've got time.
I want to pick on you for a little bit here.
You go right ahead.
Okay, so then, I'm, in my, my endeavor, and I have been on a seven-year endeavor to switch Pickwa from a charter to a statutory. I just didn't start this, I came up here.
No.
Seven years ago, when Joe Wilson was a commissioner and Gary had only been here a year or so, so. So, I'm going to, first of all, I'd like to say that if we did switch to a statutory, then I would hope that Gary would be the safety director. And he's already said that he wouldn't do that, but he would certainly be one of the best, and I would highly encourage him to do that. But that's another story. So, what I'm up here tonight to do is to tell you that I planned this campaign out. I don't know how successful it would be, we will see, but I'm to the point where I've made my case to what is wrong with Pickwa. And so, now I'm going to hit the middle of, of start giving reasons of why we should switch to a statutory and be a little more specific. So, I'm going to start with you. So, I did know today that you, I did see on somewhere where you met with Mike DeWine, you were on the stage with Mike DeWine. And so, you know, in our charter system, we're not, we're not political at all, you know? So, the, in, in government, you have two things to govern. You have the administrative side, which is, Gary is the administrative side, and you guys being elected representatives, you are the political side. Now, you know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you all my experience, but I've raised millions of dollars over the years for candidates. I finished my fundraising career working for the Kennedy family in Massachusetts. I raised a lot of money. I, I know the Kennedy family, I spent a lot of time in Massachusetts with them. So, I know about fundraising. I know about what I'm, what I'm telling you is, I, I know a lot about it. So, the reason I'm talking to you is that, is that, you know, when you let these things slide, when you, with the, the political side of it, is, have you sent Mike DeWine a letter yet, saying, "Mike, it was nice meeting you," and?
No, he asked me what we could do, and I was going to express what he could do for Pickwa, and I told him exactly.
There you go. I, I, a politician like Mike, I, I've done events for him. And what I would do, every time he ran, won an election, I'd send him flowers just to make sure he remembered who I was. And I've never asked him for a favor, never had to. I think he would remember me. I know he would remember you. So, you know, my point is.
I was a lot bigger than him up on that stage, but go ahead.
So, he, he will, he will remember you, especially if you were to send him a letter and explain, I'm, you know, it was great. And then, listen, you know, Mr. DeWine, Governor DeWine is, you know, we're trying to develop Pickwa as a smart city or economic development. I just, you know, what, the political side of this, what is available at the state and federal level is incredible. So, so, I think that's a problem with our charter system, that we don't really approach the political side of it as much.
Oh, but he approached us, so, and I'll, I'll tell that when it comes my turn to talk, but, because I don't want to take up your time, but, and I.
I promise you, if Gary had been out there, he wouldn't have spent a second with him. That's just how those guys are, that they get, that he can't be political, he gets you can. So, anyhow, so now I want to pick on Mr. Patrizio just for a moment. And so, I want to go to the, to the fact that we, a law director, that we, that, that, you know, we pick one, or you guys choose whoever you want. And, and, and in a statutory system, we would elect one. And, and the reason that is important is because in Pickwa, our county is run by the, what they call the, the Troy mafia. And, and most of the attorneys know what that is. That's the, there's a small group of Republicans who run this county, and they appoint the judges at the, you know, and they decide who's in the political offices. Having been a candidate from past years, I ran, the same people, same, a couple generations later are still running this county. And so, what happens, we, they throw us a bone once in a while, and we get to have a judge. Or they throw us a bone once, once in a while, and, and we get some other insignificant job. Pickwa used to be a power center. We, Ted Gray was the Senate pro tem here at one time, and he was, and Pickwa was very, at the same time Congressman McCullough was here.
Yeah.
We were a power center in, in politics, and these things are important. So, somebody like a Patrizio that, you know, aspires to higher office, you can't, it's very hard to launch that from here.
Are you assuming he inspires the higher office?
Well, he's run several times. I'm assuming that he, if somebody offered him a judgeship, he would jump on it.
I don't know.
I don't know. What I'm asking is sitting right there. But it doesn't make any difference, it's just with our, with the system we have, it's very difficult for any of you to, you know, you want, I don't, I don't know, would any of you like to be a, a county commissioner, or, or, or maybe a state representative? Our charter government is not a launching pad for that.
That's the point.
And it costs us a lot of money over, over the years, and it costs a lot of political power, so, thanks.
Thanks for making your, making your point, I appreciate your time. Anybody else come forward, Mr. Roman?
Since you said my name, 406 West High.
Yeah, there you go.
Two things here. First thing, number one, I think it's only fair that if we decide to have a work session for a pool, we should also have a work session for Mr. Jacqua's legislation. I think both are important to discuss the situation. I think five minutes of him coming up here and talking about it isn't enough, or at least giving him some type of.
That's his, that's his format, that's not something the city.
Sure, sure.
That's not something the city is involved with, though.
No, but it would affect the city in whole, in a, as, as a general, you know, whole. But anyway, that's just my opinion on that. Going back to the pool, unlike my future wife, I don't swim. I have eczema, and I don't have kids, so I've got no reason to want a pool. And even when I did swim, I always felt like Godzilla in a pool full of small townsfolk, so I just never really liked it, so.
There's a butt in there somewhere, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. But with that being said, I lived in New Breaman for two years, and, and the city of New Breaman is basically owned by the Crown Equipment Company. And they take very, very certain specifications when it comes to upkeeping the town for the community strength. And they make sure that all community assets, including a pool, are upkept properly, because they know that the first thing that anybody that's going to come to that town, even though it's a village, anybody that comes to that village is going to do is they're going to look at the community and decide if they would like to do business with ground. And they do a very good job of doing it, too, very well upkept. I just didn't like it because it was way too out in the sticks for me. But my point is, is that it is important to have these things, because it does build a community. Why, as people who came up here and said it, it is for the kids, but at the same time, businesses look to see the strength of the community and how well it's going to be stabilized and how well things like a pool, even though it might seem insignificant to some. It's very significant to companies looking here, to come here for industry, to see how the community is built. And along with what Mr. Jacqua said about the competition between Troy, Sydney, and Pickwa, I grew up, I was born in Pickwa, but I grew up in Troy. And that rivalry is very real, even outside of high school. So, if somebody comes and looks at what we have, and we decide, oh, now we'll just take a splash pad. And then they go and look at what Sydney has and what Troy has, if that's the tipping point, as, as minuscule as it might sound, it could be, it could be. And on my page, I do a lot of straw polls, and one of them was the pool. And it was about fifty-fifty, I think it was like fifty-four percent to forty-something percent for or against, four was the winning side. So, I think the community as a whole is split on this issue, but I think you would have enough support to pull off, or would need to be pulled off to get a new one. And again, like I said at the beginning, and what I started saying this, I don't swim, so I have no reason to be for it, but I know it's important to the community building, and that's the goal. So, I would be for any, whether it's fundraising, a levy, doesn't matter what it is, it, it's very important to the overall future for this town, even if some people don't see it. So, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Hey, appreciate your time, thank you for your opinion as well.
Joe Drapp, 1366 Park Avenue, you get to be my age, you never know, might be the last time you ever see me, so. Couple bookkeeping, or.
Housekeeping?
Bookkeeping issues of sorts here. We did, in fact, I trust, have a quorum for the township trustees tonight?
Yes.
Is there only three of them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Wasn't sure about that, but I thought maybe make note of that for public record, that we did have, indeed have a quorum for the consent agenda. The second thing was, from time to time, I know it's necessary to waive the three-reading rule came about tonight.
Yes.
And we've had numerous instances over the past where developers, or we had this, that, or there was someone else's time schedule, we just had to get it done. It comes up with insurance issues from time to time, and so, that, in my entire time coming to these meetings, I've never once known of that waiving the three-reading rule to ever be abused. It's usually, it's, we got to do it quick, so I'm all for that. And as far as the pool, I think we should have a pool, too. But my main concern is if we don't, I don't know how many kids a day go to that pool, but if we don't have that pool, those kids will be out on the street.
Doing what?
Exactly. Even if it means that, if you work at the pool, you do some babysitting, but I think that's still, is better than kids having no one looking out for what they're doing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I myself don't need the sun, but I sure do, wouldn't mind it, let's put it that way. So, anybody else?
Joe Wilson, 11 West Green.
Hey, Mr. Wilson, how are you, sir?
Pretty good. Want to start out by thanking you for fixing the gazebo. My daughter, or my granddaughter and I, you know, play hide-and-seek there.
Yeah.
And it's very nice and good shape, so I appreciate that that got done last year. Second comment is, can we get the meetings live again on TV like we had six, seven years ago, whatever it was?
What's the process on that?
I think it would be nice to have them live instead of just taped.
The schools would have to buy a very expensive piece of equipment to make that happen.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's kind of their call on that.
Okay, I, I just, it's nice when they were live. The last thing, we haven't had anyone talk about being in favor of being a charter city, what are some possible advantages or disadvantages? And I think retaining a charter city is, in my opinion, the way to go. If we have a system like Troy has, we would have partisan politics, we would be running under a political party. I, I don't think it really matters what your party is if you're on the city commission. It just, people will vote for someone who's Republican or Democrat regardless of what they say. And we've had past commissioners who have been independents and various things that may have interfered with the vote. So, I like not having a political party with any candidate running for city commission. I think it kind of gets in the way. And especially with the way all the parties are going nowadays, it's nice not being involved with that, I think, a little bit, especially on the local level. Other thing is, if we go to nine commissioners, we're going to have unequal representation within the city. Right now, we have five representatives of equally balanced populations, so everyone represents twenty percent of the city. If we go to nine commissioners.
What if we went to seven? We've just had a couple at-large people.
You would still have an imbalance, because if you look at the parts of the city, for example, Ward Five typically has a higher turnout rate than any other ward. So, you would expect Ward Five to have a higher percentage on the commission based on past voting, right? It kind of makes sense, so.
Sure.
I don't like having an imbalanced representation on the commission. Right now, we're perfectly balanced. A few years ago, we even balanced the population of the wards to ver, to keep that balance population-wise. I can't, you can't control who votes, but you can control your base within each ward. So, I think we would do some of that equal representation by going to a different method, and I'm a little worried about that.
So, is it more of a matter of, because you said something about the fifth, fifth ward coming, more people voting in the fifth ward? Is it more a matter of getting people in those other wards to come out more and vote, or would you still have that problem under a statutory system, or is it just unique to?
I think, I think there's more of a chance to have an unbalanced representation within the city when you don't have an equal representation like we have now.
Sure.
And that, and that could affect where projects go. It may not affect anything, I don't know, but I like the idea of having five equally represented people up here, representing five equally represented population zones. I think it's, makes more sense. Would you want, you know, three or four people from the same general neighborhood on a commission possibly influencing things a different way? I don't know, but this way, it cannot happen the way we have, where we are today, and I think that's important. But this way, it cannot happen the way we have, where we are today, and I think that's important. Before we go into other things that we may or may not happen, and there's a lot of opinions, it may or may not be true, but fact of the matter is, we would have unequal representation if we go to a method that is, uh, being talked about. So just thought I'd throw that out there, and I don't need any answers from anybody, but, uh, just the way I'm looking at it, so.
From a legal standpoint, you can amend the charter to add more commissioners.
Yeah.
I don't know if Joe was on the same charter committee I was on. We had-
Yeah, I was.
Probably, uh, a, uh, it seemed like days conversation about if we wanna make three, wanna divide the city up differently and have at-large. And really, the commissioners and the people involved said, no, we like the fact that each ward has equal representation.
Right.
I think we were the commissioner or committee that had it, so they redistricted every ten years to make it so it was equal.
Right.
And particularly, some commissioners were adamant that they felt like if we went to an at-large system, their end of the town would not be represented, uh.
Yeah, it, it could very well happen. And a lot of the changes that are being proposed for the different types of cities can be done within the charter, uh, framework. Whether it's voting for mayor from the, from the commission or from the voting booth. That was recently changed. It could remain the same or be changed back, so that's not an issue at all, whether it's charter or not. So there's a lot of changes within the charter that we could do, uh, within, if we want to, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Appreciate your comments.
We should have a debate, have a, you know, have a town hall, so we can talk about the debate. The fact of the matter is, the four of you up there are up there. You ran unopposed. What kind of, what kind of a democracy, just talking about equal representation? My goodness, we had one guy deciding who the whole mayor was. We had one guy who won't sit in Pickwa, you two, you, and then, and Chris, and then, then this guy right here. One guy decided who the mayor was.
Uh, you, you've, you made your point, and, you know, if you wanna have a town hall with, with people present, you're welcome to, uh, get with the YWCA. Maybe they would feature something. We can put it on YouTube or something. I have a pro and con. I mean, that's, that's not a bad idea, but I don't see this as a city issue at this point. I mean, you, I mean, for us to advocate or to go against, you know? And, and I'm not doing either at this point, so. Not against it, I'm not for it, so. I mean, it's your point to prove, is all I'm saying. All right, so. Commissioners, let's, uh, comments. Start with Casey.
Um, just a couple things. Um, congratulations to Fred Langston for, was it thirty-three years of, um, employment here in the city of Pickwa? Uh, we've, we've had two of our older, older folks that have been here for a while, um, retire, so I'm wishing both of them just well wishes as they enter into those years of retirement. Um, also, just, um, thank you for the citizens that came forward about the pool. Um, it, I also am concerned about that. It, it comes down to money, and that's kinda where we are with that. But I think if we can get citizens around this, and this is a very giving city. Um, we have done things like this before, but to get a citizen committee around it, to ke, to kinda get it, something out there, to, uh, to look for what solutions can be, um, that would be great. Because I would hate to think that we are the only city north and south of us that doesn't have a pool. So, um, so thank you for your interest and your energy around that. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Um, so this past week, I've seen a couple interesting events. Uh, and it, here and tonight too, a lot of people talk about community. So some I've actually been reflecting on quite a bit, and um, so one of the events was, uh, I got the pleasure of sending off troops fourteen eighty-seven, um, also known as the Iron Camels, which I thought was a pretty cool name. Um, I hope I'm not taking any thunder from somebody, but-
You're not taking any thunder. Keep going.
Um, so there was General Johnson that delivered a speech, and it was, it was actually pretty moving. And he actually talked with his troops about sense of community as well. So really, I was trying to reflect on that because Natalie's not here tonight, but she pulled a sense of community together all within like a week's timeframe. It was amazing.
Amazing.
And so I looked up the definition of what community actually was. And I, I was kinda surprised because it just says, it's a group of people living in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. I was kind of shocked because I thought a sense of community kinda meant, meant more than that. So what I, what I did kind of feel and reflect on was, I kinda felt that past week, we were more of kind of a family.
Oh, yeah.
It was kind of interesting because, um, when the general talked about that troop and being a community, they weren't just from, or working in the same location. I felt they more had a family bond with them. Anytime you have somebody in the military, you hear a lot about that. Them being brothers and working together and sisters. Um, so as working as a family and working in the same area and also being as a community, I, I came across this quote that said, without a sense of caring, there can be no sense of community. And I know a family cares. And with Natalie last week trying to pull everybody together, people didn't have to have a reason to help, people just came and helped. And that's something that family does, and it was pretty interesting to see. And seeing that support and growth and having that sense of caring. So I know I was up here on the, the commission, we truly care. The city workers, after going through the government academy, I mean, it was amazing, some of the support that they will give this city. They'll give it their all. They, they truly care. I know the people in this room care. You come to every commission, I mean, I see familiar faces. And I think what I wanted to challenge people is, because you hear a lot of negative comments in the sense of people not feeling, um, even though they lived in Pickwa, they've grown in Pickwa, they don't feel a sense of pride in Pickwa. So my challenge is not to just push those people away, but kind of embrace them. Help bring them in and help them try to get more involved. Um, because we live in a fantastic and wonderful city, and I've just seen how much people truly care, and I think that's what can make a difference. So really, that's just kind of the reflection I've had this past week. We've seen some really good things happen in this city, so.
Thank you. Very good. I agree with a lot of what you're saying. Nothing from you. Uh, Thomas?
No, I mean, all right. Uh, well, I wanna thank everybody for coming out. Uh, Eddie, thank you for your presentation on the pool tonight. Uh, I think it's good to get those numbers out there for the public to see those numbers and also, you know, wanting to bring the students on board out of our local school systems. I think that's important. Um, students, for me, you know, they kinda drive what parents do. So when you start impacting the kids down on that level, you know, they can help change that atmosphere of the community. Uh, last commission meeting, I talked about, you know, getting out, being involved with city boards and the committees that we have. As of February fourth, twenty twenty, we got the following openings. The civil service, we got three openings. Uh, energy board, we have one opening. Housing council, we have two openings. Income tax board of review, we have two openings. Park board, we have four, and the tree committee, we have one. Um, so, you know, I still make that encouragement for the citizens of Pickwa. Get out, become involved with our boards and community and our committees. Um, 'cause, you know, we can make an impact there as well. Um, you know, this past weekend, Commissioner Grissom was talking about the send-off of the fourteen eighty-seventh year, you know, the Iron Camels out of Pickwa here. I had a chance to serve with them. And this, over the past month that I've been a commissioner, the city commissioners and the mayor that we have have stood out in numbers, and we come out to community events. And we're trying to get more involved to show the community that your local board of legislation up here is rallying together to give that support back to the community. Um, I was hoping Natalie was gonna be here tonight. I owed her an apology for not making her video shoot. When I found out that I couldn't be there, I sent the chamber an email right away, said, hey, apologize to her for me 'cause I couldn't make it today. And I told them also in that email that I would apologize tonight 'cause it was my intent to be out there to support that. One thing also as well, another initiative that I'm taking upon myself inside of the city, um, is looking at job vacancies we have. You know, we talk a lot about industry coming to Pickwa, and we wanna drive employment up in our town, so we become competitive with tax dollars and new industry coming in. Currently, right now, rough numbers is two hundred and twenty vacant jobs in our town. So I encourage the community once again to get out and push, hey, you know, we got these job vacancies. They're well-paying jobs. Have friends and family come down and apply for these jobs to help close that deal for us. That way, we can start driving maybe new business to come here. And for tonight, that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Great comment. Ma'am?
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, let you know that I too agree that we need a, uh, to do something about our pool. And I think we're, we're taking the right steps. I think that having, uh, a workshop together or all of us coming together to review the facts is very important. Um, it is, the bottom line is the money. But I think this community comes together when there's a need. We support one another, and if we have teamwork, we'll get it done. Thank you.
All right. Getting my calendar out because, uh, I wanna talk about a few things. First of all, I wanted to congratulate, uh, Fred Langston, um, on his retirement. Um, a great city worker, worked for a long time. Next, I wanted to say that we gotta thank, I got a thank you card, city got a thank you card from, uh, Mayor Oda from Troy. When they had their tornado hit, um, police department did a great job, sent some people over there, and she was very grateful. And, uh, Gary reached out and spoke to, uh, Mr. Titterington, um, their, their, um, what's his title exactly?
Public service-
Public service-
Safety director.
Public safety director. Um, and, uh, and I, I reached out and asked her if there's anything else we could do. And she just felt the love. And, you know, that's, we're a community, we're next to them. Yeah, yeah, we are competing for industry and whatnot, but in times of need, we're gonna be there for them, and they're gonna be there for us. So we reached out and she was very happy. It was a nice, it was a nice card. Um, I want to let you know, uh, I am more proud of this commission. They go to events together. I mean, I've been on two years, a little over two years now, and, uh, it was hit and miss, and poor Casey had to do a lot of the stuff by herself. But we are doing this together to represent you. And so Saturday, when we were at the, uh, uh, call to duty uh, for the Iron Camels, uh, we were all together again, and this is several times. And, um, I did get to meet, um, uh, the governor. And one of the first things, uh, I didn't know he was gonna be there, and I was shocked. One of the first things he said was, how can I help you? What's going on? And I gave him, uh, an earful about what he could do to help, you know? I'm like, any industry. And then he pointed out the exact same thing, uh, Commissioner Thomas said. He said, if you gone to Ohio Means Jobs and looked to see how many jobs are available in your areas, I said, yeah, I, I knew there were over two hundred. I didn't know there were two twenty, but I knew there were over two hundred. He said, he said, and I explained to him how Pickwa is poised with the fiber and the excess of energy and the new power plant that we've got and the water and wastewater. He's like, looks like you guys are well set, and, you know, anything we can do to help. So Mr. Jacqua gave me a great idea to send a card. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. I will send him a card. Uh, I could send him an email, but cards more personal. I'm gonna do that. I appreciate that. Um, but they wanted to help, and it, it was an honor for me. I got his autograph. I'll be honest with you. I was like a little kid because I'm, I'm not used to rubbing elbows or talking to people like that, and it was nice. And it wasn't about me, it was about we. And it was about sending those troops off. And one of the things that I had the pleasure of doing when the troops got to go is I got to shake each and every one of their hands before they went, and I thanked them for their service. And I told them, in my little speeches, that we love you here in Pickwa, and, you know, come back. We, we, you know, it's sad to see you go, but we, we will welcome you back, and, and we appreciate having you here as a, as a unit, so. Uh, and that was great. Um, congratulations to the team that, uh, was successful in, in the, uh, Pittsburgh burger, uh, movie. Um, Casey, you were part of that. Appreciate everything you've done, uh, with that. And I want to yell a shout-out. Natalie said she couldn't be here. She sent me a couple of emails. She was gonna get here. She had some babysitting issues, uh, but she couldn't do it. But if you don't know, she's got a video that, that they're doing for Hometown, um, HGTV. And I made, Chris and I actually made one of the last, uh, pictures for it, so. Uh, I was just tickled pink that we're gonna be in a video. Whether we win or not, doesn't matter, but you can use that video to promote the city of Pickwa, and it's out there, you know, and I think that's, I think that's great. But it took one person, one person with an idea to come forward to bring all these people together. And she gets kudos, uh, for being that one person to step forward and do what she thought would help the city. And I, I have much appreciation, much love for that, so. Anybody that does that is, is great in my book. Uh, I'd like to, uh, pat one of the city workers, uh, and we have great workers for the city. The people here don't twiddle their thumbs. They work hard for you, and they, and they work hard for the city, and they represent the city well. Uh, Brittany Hazlitt is gonna, uh, she works for Ed Krieger in the Power Systems Department, uh, gets an atta boy. And I, I'll, I'll tell you why. I, I have a guy, uh, he's a good, I've known him a long time. I went to school with his mom. And he will say things on social media, and he's critical of, of the city from time to time. But when the city does something right, he also says something, uh, great about the city. And he sent me a message, uh, saying, hey, can you let Brittany Hazlitt know that they got a street light out? I think it was in their alley. And he sent me a picture of it, and he was just happy that the, the light went out there. He called her up. She talked to him. She helped make it happen. And, uh, did you get an email about that today? So I sent Ed, uh, Krieger an email saying, give her an atta boy, uh, CC'd, uh, Gary on it. But these are your city workers that work hard for you and, and love the city and wanna help the people at work. And she does a great job. She's, and, and to her, it's normal course of doing business. But she did a good job, and, and to me, she gets recognition for it. All right? I do want to see what commissioners' ideas or thoughts of, of setting a pool meeting. Are you guys available sometime at the end of this month, in the next couple of weeks, to have a pool meeting? We can invite the city. I know we probably need to set it out a couple of weeks at least. Um.
Aren't those like a work session on a Thursday night?
Yes, a Thursday night work session, two Thursdays from now. What's, what's that looking like for you?
The twentieth?
Uh, yeah, if that's... There we go, okay. Twentieth or twenty-seventh, either one.
I can do either.
Either one.
I feel like the only one out 'cause I don't have my cell phone out looking at the calendar, so.
That's the only reason I could do it. No, it's not my actual calendar. All right, let's set it for the twenty-seventh. That way, it gives us, um, at, is six o'clock, okay? Let's get this started. That way, we get enough, get it out. Jay, can you put it on yours? All right? Um, it's, uh, it's February twenty-seventh at, uh, six PM, so we can get started. And it's not a one-time deal. It's a constant thing until we get the ball rolling and come up with a solution, uh, to this. Yes, sir?
And that, you are, you're waiting here.
Would, yeah, would be here, wouldn't it? And, and we're not gonna be up here. We're gonna be down there with you guys, so. I mean, I don't feel, I don't like, I'm no better than anybody else, and I'm the same. But we will come up with a solution for this together. Wanna save the pool. I love the pool. I, I think it's a, a, a thing for the kids to do, and seeing those pictures of the concrete and, and stuff, yeah, we gotta do something about it. We gotta do something about it. So let's plan on doing that, if everybody's in agreement.
Sounds good, man.
Yes.
All right. I have nothing else beyond that, and, uh, other than that, I really believe that we have a great city manager as well, and support everything that he, he's doing. And, um, uh, I, I've just, you know, business is coming, it's, it's coming. And, uh, can we get updates, like, uh, what, monthly updates on economic development as possible?
As we can, yes.
As possible. If it's not there, then that's fine. Or if it's something you can, can't talk about, that's fine, but just to let people know, there are businesses that are settling here and, and things are happening, so. All right. With that, I'll take a motion. Did you have something else?
Did you have a, did we skip the one, the, your report? Oh, I didn't have anything. Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear.
Oh. Oh, yeah. You just reminded me of something. If, if you guys go down Main Street and if you drove by Lucky's Bar, have you seen it? Does it not look good? All right, it looks, that area is starting to come along. And, uh, let's give them kudos for, they, they sunk a big investment redeveloping that, and we'll give them kudos as well. I appreciate what they're doing. What were you gonna say, Chris? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't know if there was a, a report, but he said it was.
No, there's nothing at this time.
Sorry.
At this point, we'll just, I need a motion.
Motion to it.
To?
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. Second?
Second.
All right. Dismissed. We are adjourned.